Stephen Siller. The Tunnel to Towers Foundation chose the momentous occasion of the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks to award Officer White with the Follow the Footsteps Award. Please join me in congratulating Officer Bill White. It is wonderful. It is really quite an honor. Thank you. Quite an honor. Would you like to say anything? We would love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. I don't know which way to turn. I'll look at the peace poll. I'll just stay this way. Same thing I say is just about every time that they allow me to speak at any venue. It's, I'm the one that always gets to sit up in the front, and the other people that don't, they never, you guys never get to hear their names, so I always say it. Officer Jason Smith, Jeremy Cooper, Jeff Carpenter, Chris Dugan, and Scott Borch for the Peoria Police Officers out there that evening, along with MCSO Deputy Christian Dever. If it wasn't for them, I guarantee no matter what, would not be here. Every time I get anything, I say, if it wasn't for them, I wish they all could be here receiving this. I'm the one that, as they say, tried to progress and get to the threat. I look at it, I'm the idiot that left cover. That's the way I look at it. They don't, they were the ones that literally ran out in the line of fire. And they, they are the ones that pulled me out. So those are the ones that should be here. I do appreciate it, all of the stuff. I did not quit. I won't quit. Few more years, I wish I could get my high three, but I only got three, so that's all I got. I do appreciate everything, and again, I love saying those men's, those men's names when I come up to receive things like this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. Yep. I will. Boy, this is a good night, I have to say. Our next presentation is a proclamation recognizing the city of Peoria as an international city of peace. And I would like to ask Chuck Fitzgerald to join me for this presentation. Come on down here. Chuck is going to say a few words in a few minutes, but first, I would like to introduce you to him. This is a gentleman, a Peoria resident, who has made it his mission to spread peace throughout the city of Peoria, and in doing so, in one of his many initiatives, he has made the city of Peoria an international city of peace. And that is no small feat. Just on his reputation alone, I will say, he was able to get a lot of people to understand what he was talking about, to realize that it was a credible, viable, real issue that we should all sign on and undertake for our city, and that it was a good thing for our city. And also, he helped me understand that we were doing a lot of the things already. And I'll let him tell you about that, but first, because we are now an international city of peace, I am going to read a proclamation that pretty much codifies it all. So... One moment here while I do this. I know you're anxious to get this microphone, I can tell. Whereas, the United Nations has designated the 21st of September each year as International Day of Peace, devoted to commemorating and strengthening the ideals of peace, of peace within ourselves and among all nations and peoples. And whereas, peace is not merely the absence of war and violence, but a condition where society has achieved a balance of prosperity, security, justice, and hope. No small things. Whereas, the citizens of Peoria all wish to live in peace within their homes, their neighborhoods, and throughout this beautiful city. And whereas, the citizens of Peoria believe every act of service helps to build peace in families, schools, businesses, and communities, and the citizens of Peoria, through their professions and their volunteer efforts, are committed to establishing peace in the region to promote economic opportunity, and are dedicated to improving the quality of life for all people in our community. And whereas, the citizens of Peoria believe in the capacity and capability of young people in our community to take leadership roles now and in the future for building peace through service, dialogue, goodwill, and understanding. And whereas, the citizens of Peoria constantly, consistently endeavor to build peace, and by those efforts have now been officially designated by Cities of Peace, Inc. as an international city of peace. Now therefore, I, Kathy Carlet, Mayor of the City of Peoria in the state of Arizona, do hereby designate September 21, 2021, as Peoria Day of Peace. Yeah, I did it. That was a really long one, so... So I know we've got some people here who helped Chuck to get our city established, and I'm going to let him introduce them, and I'm going to let him talk a little bit about some of the efforts and why we have this poll sitting right here.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. Again, it's, it's been a labor of love for me, and Officer White, you were actually part of this back in the day, so I'm glad you're here. I can't believe, it feels like a God moment, a providential moment, that you're here when we're doing this, so I appreciate you being here. But I brought some other folks with me, and I'd like you to join me if you would. Scott Andrews, the president of the Peoria Chamber of Commerce, Dr. Jason Reynolds, who's the superintendent of Peoria Unified School District, and Roz, I'm going to mess up your last name, Roz Shanley, who's the general manager of the Peoria Diamond Club. And so, these three individuals put their name on the application, along with the mayor, and so I'm just grateful to the three of you and the organizations that you lead here in Peoria with your commitment to ensure Peoria is an international city of peace. So I'm glad you're here as well. So, you know, Peoria's been doing this stuff for a very long time, and it's all over the place. It's in our community, it's here in this organization, whether it's things like Peoria Leadership Institute, or the Citizens Academy, all those sort of things that you have available, or it's all the things all of our organizations are doing. The Rotary Clubs, the, you know, the Lions Clubs, the, all the nonprofits, all the arts, all that, and all they're trying to do is create an optimal environment so that humans can flourish. That's really what peace is about. And so, it's just been a labor, like I say, a labor of love of mine to, to kind of press into this and to identify people in our community that are doing the work. It's not me that's doing all the work, it's, it's the community. It's the people that, that are here on the dais, or it's people sitting here, and I'm just honored to be here. My wife, Susan, and I have been here 29 years now in Peoria, and we just love it. I can't think of any other place we'd rather be. It's just an awesome community. So this is really all about the citizens of Peoria, and all the work they do every day, whether it's at a local shelter, or wherever it is, helping your neighbors, helping each other. That's, that's really what it's about. And it, because if we don't, if we don't start with ourselves, we're not going to be able to do the big things. You can't do the big things first, you gotta start with yourself. Start with what's close to you and work from there. So, on, on that note, I mentioned to City Manager Jeff Tyne a few moments ago that we would like to leave this peace poll here at the city. If you don't accept gifts, that's fine, we'll, we'll just loan it, if that's the right language. But either a loan or a gift, however that works, maybe you can find room for it by that tree in the back or something, or maybe you want to put it somewhere else in the city, but...
Can you tell us where it's at?
It's a peace poll. This peace poll has the phrase "May Peace Prevail on Earth" in four different languages on it. And really, it's a reminder. When you look at it, you stop, you take a little bit of a deep breath, and say, okay, things seem like they're out of control, but not everything's out of control, right? Right? We can focus on all the stuff that's not, not with the way we want it, but there's a lot of stuff that is the way we want it, and it's because of the hard work of everybody. So it's a reminder, where, you'll see these in the community. We have one at Centennial High School that we were able to put in, and there's many others in the community. But it's a reminder, just stop, you know, lower your heart rate a little bit, things are going to be okay. That's really what it's about. But we would like for you to have this here at the city, whatever, whatever is appropriate for you to do. I hope, I hope it's this room, because, you know, this is where it all flows from, right? So, so anyhow, so that's really all I had to say, and just thank you, Mayor, for all your support in this. Photo up?
Wanted to, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that all the people up here are true leaders in our community, and we thank you so much for your support in getting us to this point, where we can all say that peace is just something that we need as human beings. So we appreciate you, your help, and, and, yes.
So we're city 334 in the world.
In the world.
In the world. And if you were, if you were to look at internationalcitiesofpeace.org, you can see the list. And so we're 334, and they've added two since us. So, there you go.
Zooming. Okay. I think we need a photo here.
334.
[inaudible]
All right, our next presentation, oh, this, don't do it. Our next presentation is certificates of appointment to newly appointed board and commission members, and I would like to call your attention to the screen for a short video about our boards and commissions.
...planning and zoning. They're made up of residents and business leaders who bring a wealth of personal and professional experience, and who generously volunteer their time, energy, and wisdom to our community. These members meet on a regular basis, deliberating and collaborating on various projects and issues of importance for the benefit of all Peoria residents. In the past few years, they have had a direct role in influencing meaningful projects like the Veterans Memorial Expansion, multiple public art installations, accessible park amenities, and our youth advisory board even collaborated with the State Attorney General's Office to team up in the fight against tobacco sales to minors. As we welcome new volunteers into this exceptional group of people, I want you to know how much we appreciate your willingness to share your time and expertise with our city. On behalf of the City of Peoria and the Peoria City Council, I want to express our gratitude and appreciation. Your service makes a difference. It's an honor to have you working alongside us as we shape our finest future.
And Councilmember Bill Patena is here as a member of the Council Subcommittee for Boards and Commissions to introduce our new members.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome new members of the boards and commissions, and when I come down, would you please, come on down, get your plaque, and take a photo. First one is Shelby, Shelby DuPlessis, Design Review Board. Next is Amanda Parafinic, Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Board. And the last one is Donald Singer, Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Board.
I just wanted to say thank you one more time to all of the people who were here this evening to celebrate all the great things happening in the city of Peoria, and for your service. All right. We will now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or have been previously reviewed and/or discussed by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If the presiding officer receives a timely notice of a request for removal, an item may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration on the regular agenda. Council, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? I have received none in advance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we have motion to second. Council, please vote. Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move on to the regular agenda and new business. Items 16R, COVID-19 Child Care Stabilization Grant Program Funding, Department of Economic Security. Mr. Tyne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And Kelly Kincaid, as well as Sherry Steele from our neighborhood and Human Services Department, will discuss a grant opportunity from the state's Department of Economic Security, and have props as well with that. So I'll pass it to Ms. Kincaid.
Clicker is always the key here. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you so much for this opportunity to connect with you on the grants that we have received over the past couple of months. Today, here with me, I'd like to introduce Sherry Steele. She is our Family and Youth Services Manager, and we are going to tag-team this together to present the information that we'd like to share today. But before we get into the details of the new grant, I'd like to refresh your memories on the Department of Economic Security grant that you approved back in June. That particular grant was called the Childcare Work First Retention and Recruitment Grant. The grant was intended to help childcare providers with salaries, benefits for employees, and bonuses incentives for hiring and retention. This was appropriated through the Coronavirus Act Relief and Economic Security Act, basically CARES Act of 2020. The grant provided a base award for our programs, which was calculated using a per-child rate of approximately $75 for each child who was enrolled in our program during the month of January of 2020. So as long as they attended at least one day in that month, we were able to receive the grant funding for those particular children. We were awarded $69,000 to cover eligible expenses dating back to January of 2021, but we needed to expend those by September 30, which is Thursday. While spending the grant down, the Family and Youth Services Division applied for and has been awarded funding through another grant offered by the Department of Economic Security, also awarded through being a Department of Health Services licensed childcare provider. The Childcare Stabilization Grant Program assists childcare providers in covering costs during the COVID-19 state of emergency. The goal of the grant is to help childcare providers with operational costs needed to safely remain open, as well as to reopen to provide childcare to Arizona families. This grant is provided on a base award through the Department of Economic Security, which is using a certified participant capacity. So basically, what that means is that they are taking our capacity of each location, which varies depending upon location, and that's how that rate will be determined for the grant award amount. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Sherry, and she will talk to us about our service stats.
Thank you, Kelly. So you can see here by the graphs, in previous years, our average youth program served up to about 2,500 participants with support from 140 part-time staff. This year, we are currently serving 880 participants as of today, and our staffing levels are meeting this need. As you can see, the waitlist indicated in the orange continues to grow since the beginning of the school year. Our goal is to get to the point that we can open up that waitlist and serve more residents, as is our mission to do. We're working on it. The Childcare Stabilization Grant will support the following programs: our AMPM program, Little Learners Preschool Program, and Summer Camp, which are all licensed through the Department of Health Services, as Kelly mentioned. These programs are located within the Peoria Unified School District, and we continue to maintain that strong, longstanding relationship with PUSD. This grant funding is derived from the vast need across our nation to improve the state of childcare programs. As these statistics do show, our Family and Youth Services staff have faced many challenges over the past 18 months, including staff shortages, lack of qualified applicants, and staff retention. This grant can be used to help childcare providers cover a variety of expenses, including reimbursement of expenses between January 2020 through September 30 of 2023. Under these guidelines, the maximum award anticipated for the City of Peoria Family and Youth Services childcare programs is to reach no more than $4.5 million. This grant, this grant can be used to help childcare providers cover a variety of expenses. These would include, but are not limited to, workforce recruitment and retention, staff training and professional development, mental health support for our children, goods and services necessary to maintain or resume childcare services such as transportation and cleaning and PPE supplies. This evening, our recommendation would be that the staff recommends that the city council accept the award of this grant funding. And we're open for any questions.
Council, any questions or comments? You know, there's just nothing but great things to say about approving this grant. I mean, childcare stabilization is the, the perfect title. It helps our children, but it also allows their parents to go to work and not have to worry about their kids, and it takes care of, you know, mental health issues and, and a lot of the issues that stemmed from the entire pandemic. So this is just fabulous, and, and we're glad that it is in such good hands. So we appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Council, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you very much for all that you do. All right. Item 17R is Contract Amendment, Hunter Contracting, Inc., Reclaimed Waterline Implementation Project One. Mr. Tyne?
Thank you, and we have Adina Lund. Our engineering director will present on this contract amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be back tonight with more water infrastructure projects. We are really on a roll with getting these projects out and moving. So this is the brief overview. We've talked about the reclaimed water many times, myself and Kate Powers, and we've talked about the need for reclaimed water in our future, and the large percentage of water that is going to come from reusing water. So the overall project one, as a reminder, is from the Beardsley Treatment Plant up to Paloma Community Park, and it's separated into four distinct phases. Tonight, we are talking about the first phase, the yellow one at the bottom. This segment one will be constructed by a JOC contractor. The other three phases are currently under final design, and they will go through the low bid process. So why are we using the JOC contractor for segment one? I have a lot of words up there to help explain some of the issues that we have. We are tying into what will be a pump station at the Beardsley Plant. That is being designed by one designer, and our project has a different designer. We've already changed locations of that connection one time, so the JOC helps us to be flexible. Also, they provide a lot of cost estimation and constructability review, helping to review those plans and give us some ideas for how to tighten our specifications when we go to low bid. They've also talked about the different lead times for materials, and they're definitely going to be helping us with looking at an existing line in the Beardsley Road. 30 years ago, it might be longer, there was a pipe put in for the Ventana Lakes community to service their lakes and their landscaping, but 30-year-old pipe, we believe, has probably been hit numerous times. Normally, when you hit a pipe, water would come out, or electricity would stop, or something would happen. We all know to repair it. This line, we believe, might have been hit and not repaired. So we're going to actually camera the line to see what the existing condition is. It's been very complicated, and partially is because it's under the pavement at Beardsley, which we recently microsealed. So, we've talked a lot about cutting into roads that we've recently microsealed, and when it's us cutting into our own, it's devastating. So, we're working with the JOC contractor to figure out the locations under the median where we can start doing the assessment and see if we need to further move into the pavement. Last case, you know, least preferred method, but we're going to kind of go on the fly and see how we're doing as we look at different locations. It's also coordinating with a developer project, a storage facility that's going to be coming, and we're going to be working close to people's backyards and right in front of the plant. So, the current contract was awarded for the preconstruction services, and to look at the condition assessment of that line I just talked about in Beardsley. The change order that we're proposing tonight includes the construction of that yellow segment one line that starts at the Beardsley Plant, and then goes underneath Beardsley Road along the 111th alignment. We're going to do a jack and bore, so that we don't disturb the pavement, but there are many storm drains and utility lines. When you're working close to a plant, there's a lot of pipes coming in and out of that plant, so there's a lot of utility conflicts to have to kind of thread our, thread through the needle. And so we will continue that up along the backs of those homes from Beardsley to Rose Garden Lane. I've included a picture of what it looks like when you're looking on Beardsley towards that 111th Avenue. So that's between what was the Linden Tree Nursery, which has gone out of business, and what is next to those homes. So this is not a road where people are used to having cars behind their backyard. This is a quiet place, and there will be a lot of coordination with the neighborhood. We're planning to start the construction in the winter of this year, and it would be complete at the end of spring. So we do have a robust public outreach plan, working with the neighbors, looking at the traffic control plans for how we're going to construct this. We have a dedicated website for the project and a hotline phone number. Picture at the bottom shows what we are going to be working with on 111th South of Beardsley. It's a very narrow road, and we are going to have to have times when we close the road to install the water line. So once again, a lot of coordination with the neighbors. So we're asking you tonight to award a contract amendment to Hunter Contracting Company in the amount of $2,233,662.60 for construction of this segment one of the reclaimed water line. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? Counsel, are there any questions?
Mayor.
Yes. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Adina, so road closure on 111th, if it's closed during the day, where would the alternate route take them?
We have the map of the neighborhood, and we're looking at the different roadways that provide the detour route. So once we have the detour route, we'll be working with that neighborhood to get all the information out as to how they would get around. And then we want to wait till the contractor, of course, after tonight, when we can work on the schedule of exactly what the duration is that would be impacting the neighborhood, because it's never great to just say we're closing a road and not have specific timeframe. So we have to work on that and make sure that it makes sense.
So are you looking at 107th as the alternative road that they would be taking?
We haven't even gotten that far yet. So we will be working closely with the neighborhood and with your office to make sure that we're choosing the right road that doesn't cause further congestion and irritation to people.
My only concern is, one, the congestion on 107th is already pretty high, and, two, some of the conditions on that road, because not all that road is owned by the City of Peoria. And so are we working in conjunction with the other agency if there's repairs need to be done at a later time once the construction here is completed?
Yes, we will be. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. This is a great project. I'm really looking forward to us getting underway. This is going to be so valuable for the future of our city. But I do want to remind everyone here that we have already done these kinds of projects. We've got reclaimed water lines in the southern portion of our city already and have had for many years, and did it when there was urban development all around it. So we're good at this. We know how to do this, and I think that, you know, we're going to be able to make sure that we have the least amount of disruption for our residents. I know in Ventana Lakes, they're going to be very appreciative of their lines being looked at with a camera, too. There's been many, many times when they want to call and say, "Oh, I think I'm smelling something today. I think we need to look at something here and there." So I think they're going to be glad that we get all of that in a nice, orderly, repairable situation first and move on. I think they're going to be happy. I hope they are. Anyone else have any comments? All right, so do we have a motion on item 17R?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, item 18R is Budget Amendment, Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, otherwise known as PSPRS. Mr. Tyne.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And Kevin Burke, our interim chief financial officer, will propose action to approve a budget amendment and a lump sum payment to the Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. I'll pass it over to Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Tyne. I thank you both for having to spell out the acronym so I can just go straight to PSPRS there.
Yeah, I see you're wearing your PSPRS bow tie tonight, so none of us will forget.
Thank you. Well, great. So once again, we're talking, this is really kind of the second part of our conversation, on the funding strategy for the Public Safety Pension Plan. As you know, this has been a hot topic for Arizona municipalities this past year, as many cities are dealing with this issue of unfunded liability and how to improve the funding position of their community and their public safety plan. To that extent, I'll just remind you that PSPRS is both an aggregate plan and an individual plan. By that, I mean that all the assets are aggregated together for the purpose of investing, but then they're all separated for the purpose of evaluating the financial health of each individual plan for each individual employer and their police and fire department within that. So given that, as we discussed, there were a variety of problems both within PSPRS and around PSPRS or to PSPRS over the past couple of decades. We went from a position of overfunded in 2000 to a position of underfunded in 2020. You can see that aggregate, the PSPRS as an aggregated plan is at 48% funded as of June 30, 2020. Our police plan is at 55%, and our fire plan is at 66%. Around 2016, a number of reforms were put in place that have really changed the trajectory of the funding status. But that being said, one of those requirements was that the City of Peoria be back to 100% funding by 2036. So that's the next 16 years there from 2020. To get there, as you can see in this plan, we need to be nibbling away at that orange unfunded portion in each and every year. To do that, PSPRS sets a minimum annual required contribution, which would average about $18 million. Currently, we're in about the 15 to 16 million range, but over the next 15 to 16 years, it'll average about 18. To that extent, that adds up to some real money of $270 million. So the question on the table is, is there a way we can do this more efficiently, more effectively? And the answer is yes, by making kind of two different steps. One is the idea of a lump sum payment of $30 million this fall, and then the second is continuing to make that annual required contribution at the $15 million amount in each of those subsequent years, so essentially taking any savings and plowing that back in. Together, that gets rid of a whole lot of orange on this graph. We get to fully funded in about six to seven years faster than the other route, and we save somewhere between 20 and 85 million. Now, Mayor Carlet asked me last session, she's like, "That's a pretty big range. How do we go from 20 to 85 million?" I don't feel I gave a complete answer on that. The 20 million is what happens if we just made the lump sum payment and then went to the readjusted minimum payment thereon out. By staying with that level 15 million payment approximately over the subsequent years, that's what gets us in that $75 to $85 million range for savings. So a pretty straightforward action gets us to a much better place. And how is this possible? As we talked about again last session, City of Peoria, the mayor and council, you have a very well-practiced, well-established principles of sound financial management. Over past years, we've been very conservative in our budgeting, and we've had better-than-expected returns on our revenue. Add to that the Peoria Funding Policy on Pension, Pension Funding Policy, that said at some point, we may want to make one of these lump sum payments. We knew that was coming, and so we made, where we had savings, we put those aside in contingency so that on a day like today, we would be able to make a substantial payment without disrupting the budget. And you can see that even though making a $30 million payment, everything within the FY22 budget stays intact and is still able to be accomplished. The other contributing factor is that PSPRS actually had a very good year in terms of its investment returns. We were speculating kind of where that would fall. We have the final number. It came in at 21.7% rate of return. We talked a little bit, a bunch about the unfunded side. The funded side, we have about $160 million in PSPRS. You take a 21% rate of return on that, that bumps it another 40 million. Then we put a 30 million on top of it. Pretty soon, we're back in the 80th percentile in about two to three years. So this is a very timely and good opportunity to move this forward. So the action in front of you is the idea of approving a budget amendment totaling $30 million from general fund contingency and the half-cent sales tax contingency to the public safety retirement accounts within those respective funds. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? So I know that we have talked about this before, but I just want to, I want you to reiterate, if you wouldn't mind, how this pension fund got into the situation that it's in right now. This is a state fund, correct?
It is. It's a state fund. So, I mean, keep in mind that we don't have an alternative as a municipal employer. All of our public safety personnel must be vested in this plan, one. Two is that it's governed by a board of directors appointed at the state level, and so they control the investments that are done on this. This is not something that we as a municipality control, nor do the members control the investments to it. Over the past two decades, we've had some poor investment decisions. We've also had some poor economic conditions. We've seen two significant recessions with the dot-com bust and then with the Great Recession that certainly depreciated assets that we had. We had some unrealistic assumptions in a number of our parameters within the plan that have been modified, and we have had some change both in the constitution of the board itself. We now have an employer representative on the board as opposed to just simply member representatives and investment professionals. This is great because it really does represent our interest as a participant and a payer into this program. So a lot of changes have been made. Unfortunately, those items got us into a bit of a negative slope, and so we are turning that around.
We are turning that around, and considering the fact that we really don't have any say over, or at least we have had no say up to this point, over how these investments happen or don't happen, you know, we want to make sure that our public safety personnel are taken care of, that they can depend on the pension that they always thought that they would have when they went into that profession, which certainly deserves a pension. And so now it is our turn to step up to the plate and take care of any deficiencies that have happened in the past. And I think that it's something that is meaningful and certainly valuable with the funds that we have, and by making one lump sum, it will help us on a lot of different counts, not only now and into the future.
Certainly does.
Taxpayer dollars being expended here. So, Counsel, any other? Councilmember Binsbacher, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, too, I echo the sentiment of the mayor. I think that we're, I'm so thrilled that we're in a position where we can pay a lump sum, and not only does it protect, you know, the pension for the members, but it saves us a significant amount of money. And really, the concept is simple. I think what just is a little overwhelming is the dollar amount itself. But again, the fact that we're in a situation where we can do this speaks volumes as to how our principles of sound financial management have really paid off and will continue to pay off. So thank you. And are there any other comments or questions? If not, I will make a motion.
Please do.
I do have a question.
No, Councilmember Dunn?
So how much did we, will we be saving again for the $30 million lump sum payment?
So by making just the $30 million as a lump sum, the projections are we would save at least 20 million off that 270 total contribution. By making the lump sum and continuing those minimal contributions for the subsequent six or seven years, I can't remember now, I think it's six years, that would save us closer to the 75 to 85 million versus that, off that 270.
And if we paid the full amount, how much would that save us?
If you paid the full amount, you would probably save somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10 to 20 million more, depending upon, again, all of this depends on the assumptions, even the numbers that I'm giving you today, depends upon rates of returns over the subsequent 15 years. But it probably would save, if the market stayed where, we hope it could save us about another 10 to 15, maybe more. You're talking about doing that as a, the 100% using pension obligation bonds or just 100% with cash?
Yeah, maybe instead of maybe, you know, other projects that we might do, expansion on parks, things like that. If we took that money and put it towards this, would it not save us a bunch of money?
So, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Dunn, the challenge with that is, so our deficit today is 110 million. So that's not a cash position that we would be able to just redirect to that. From a pension obligation bond standpoint, that's kind of the idea of, what if we went out, borrowed the full 110 million, put it against that, and then kind of look at the arbitrage difference of the debt payment being less than the interest return on that investment? That's more the trend that we've seen several other municipalities do. Glendale has done it, Flagstaff, Yuma are three that come to mind. So it is a viable option. It's a little higher risk because you're typically funding in that 15- to 20-year timeframe, and you can't be certain that that spread will be as, you know, as wide as it is right now. So hopefully, I'm answering your question. But those are kind of the two challenges with those, with trying to get to that, because you're right, if we could make a $110 million payment today, that would be ideal, but limitations to that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, do you have a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
I am a yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we have arrived at 19R, Expenditure Authority Air Handler Enhancements. Mr. Tyne.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And I'll introduce Jay Davies, our interim public works director, who will propose an expenditure using our ARPA funds to install enhancements to the city's various air handling systems. With that, I'll pass it to you, Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. Also with me, you might recognize the wizard behind the curtain from running the council show, but he does much more than that. This is Jared Spangler, our technical operations supervisor, who's going to speak to you in just a moment about the technology behind this request. First, I just want to tell you, this is discussion and possible action to approve an expenditure in the total amount of $1.393 million to contractor Dakin Applied Americas. They were chosen through a list, a public sector purchasing cooperative. They're one of three contractors that has been approved. In accordance with budget authority previously approved by council, we are looking to move forward with entering a contract with Dakin. With this, I'm going to have Jared kind of walk you through what the technology looks
All right. Mayor, council, pleased to be presenting before you tonight. So Needlepoint Bipolar Ionization, it's a mouthful I've kind of been struggling with over the last 12 months myself, but it's a technology that can enhance air quality in buildings. So it uses an electric charge between two sets of carbon fiber brushes to create positive and negative ions, and it uses the existing HVAC systems to distribute them in the space. The ions cause fine particles suspended in the air to stick to each other and making them larger and easier to be filtered out of the air. The ions also invalidate bacterial and viral matter, and the technology is certified as ozone-free. But this is an emerging technology, and the amount of research available evaluating it outside of lab conditions is growing, but it's still relatively small. And laboratory results are in sealed rooms for set amount of time in tightly controlled conditions, but in real world, buildings are quite different. Doors open, members of the public and our fellow employees walk in and out, matters on their shoes, clothes, hair, and any objects that they bring in with them inside. So we decided that some real-world testing had to be done, a pilot project. And we decided on our largest and one of our busiest round-the-clock buildings, the Public Safety Administration Building. So we decided to reach out to ADOSH as a qualified third party with calibrated equipment that's recognized statewide, and asked for industrial hygiene sampling for various indoor air quality parameters, volatile organic compounds, particulate matter, mold, and airborne bacteria prior to the installation of the system. The pre-installation sampling was conducted on December 10 of 2020, and the ionization system was installed on December 30 of 2020 in the building's four air handlers, and one of those is here in the pictures that you can see here. And the post-installation sampling was done on May 4 of 2021. So we were not expecting or looking for a complete elimination of all those criteria in the building, but we were looking for a marked decrease across the board. And I'll read an excerpt here from the ADOSH report. It says, "The comparison of these sampling results cannot provide definitive proof of the ionizing HVAC systems efficiency, but can offer a general consensus that the VOC concentrations, average particulate concentrations, mold spore concentrations, and bacteria concentrations were observed to be lower after installation. Information showed that there were drops of 15% to 84% noted in these four categories." So they were positive results indeed, which spurred us to move forward with the rest of our buildings. So right now, this phase of the So, right now, this phase of the project will touch many of the public buildings our citizens visit regularly, including Sunrise Family Center, the Community Center, the Theater, Municipal Court, DCSB, City Hall, council chambers, and both of our libraries. And in addition to our original testing location of PSAB, we're going to install the units on our Northern Patrol Services Building and all eight of our fire station, making sure that we cover our first responders. So, right now, this phase of the plan will insert needlepoint bipolar ionization emitters in 202 HVAC units in 23 buildings across the city. And 57 of those units will be replaced with new equipment prior to the installation of the ionization system as part of the planned equipment lifecycle.
Mayor, Council, with that, we're happy to answer any questions about the technology that you might have.
Council, any questions? Wow, I, I have a lot of questions. I think I'm going to need a class, actually. So, so putting in these ionization, needlepoint bipolar ionization units in 202 HVAC units is going to make the air cleaner? Is it, is it a COVID thing to help us have less virus in the air?
That is correct. It does invalidate, there are some testing for, available from the company showing that there is some effectiveness against COVID.
Wow, that's tremendous. I mean, that's huge progress. And so, you feel, you feel good about the, the, the study that we did prior to, prior to making this decision?
Yes, we worked directly with ADOSH and had them come out and sample. They sampled at 11 spots around the building, so it wasn't just a single spot. They sprinkled around the building over the full 95,000 square foot of it and pulled some good information, and we were able to get a good before and after.
Yeah, it sounds like great, high percentages, especially when you think about mold and things like that, things that we know make people sick. So, are you, are we going to be able to tell? Can we feel it? Can, does it sound?
No, you aren't going to be able to tell. The biggest thing that you will, anecdotally, notice is a change in odors. There won't, it won't be there.
There won't be an odor?
Yes.
Whereas before, there, there wasn't odor.
And Mayor will also be able to conduct follow-up testing to continue to measure the improvement in the air quality.
Wow, I mean, how can you go wrong with improving the air quality? It sounds like a wonderful improvement for, for all of our public that visits all of our buildings. It's very impressive to me. Council, are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned, and I already forgot, the number of units, buildings, everywhere that this is going. Is there any place in our city that it isn't going?
Councilmember Binsbacher, I'm happy to address that. I'm glad you asked that question. In the current phase, we're not incorporating all of the public buildings, but we will be coming forward in the future with a Phase Two, with a much smaller expenditure to capture the rest of those buildings.
Okay, any idea on the timing of that?
It will be following this. It, it will not.
It's just going to keep going?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to feel guilty about my air.
Yeah, when you, when you imagine the work.
I want everyone to have the same quality air.
Correct, fair enough. We all, we all do. And that's what this project envisions, is that all of the facilities will end up with this. The, the size, the scope of this rollout is, is fairly immense, as you might imagine. So, the Phase Two will, will just roll into that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it sounds like big progress to me, and I'm, I'm very happy about it. So, is there a motion, Council?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Councilmember Finn, how do you vote?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is call to the public for non-agenda items. If you wish to address the council, please complete a speaker request form and place it in the bin next to the speaker's podium. Because of the requirements of the state's open meeting law, the city council is not authorized to discuss or take action on any issue raised by public comment until later meeting. Please be aware that your comments will be noted. I have one speaker request form from Mr. John Forsythe. Sir, if you would kindly come to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Forsythe, 27605 North 85th Drive. I'm the Mesquite District. I'm here again tonight to talk about police accountability and reform. After last meeting, I did have a brief and really unfruitful conversation with one of your deputy chiefs. First, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Officer White for giving almost everything for the public. That's what we all wish for. You know, Mayor and Council, we live in a nation with laws, and those laws or these laws just not apply to some of us, it applies to all of us. Our forefathers were very concerned that government would overstep its bounds at one period in time, and I really believe that we're at that preface right now. You know, they, they gave, they gave the public a great fifth freedom in the First Amendment, and that was to redress grievances against our government. And that's what I'm here, again, tonight to do. When I listen to the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, there are some words in there that really strike a chord with me. You know, "To the republic for which it stands." You know, we're a republic. The power is held by the people, and you are elected representative. It's not, it's not held by law enforcement, and it's certainly not held by the government. The people will our power, our authority to the government. You know, I brought the people's laws with me again tonight. These laws are of, by, and for the people. They're not the government's laws, they're the laws of all of us, and we all should respect those. We're one nation under God, indivisible. We're one nation, we're one civilization, we're one community. We all live under one set of laws. We're indivisible because there's not two sets of laws, there's one. And we all should live under those. With liberty and justice for all, we're all judged, we all should be judged fairly and equally under our one set of laws. And this is very important. This is, this is the foundation of our democracy, is that we are one people, one nation. I'm just going to end it with this. I've been asking for change for 10 to 12 years. The American people, for the past 12 to 18 months, by a vast majority are asking for police reform accountability, yet nothing seems to change. It's my opinion that the police have their heads buried in the sand, hoping the winds of time will make everything go back to the way it was. I'm here to tell you, I'll see you next city council meeting, and I'm here to make sure the change actually happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And we will now move on to reports from City Manager, Mr. Tyne.
Well, thank you. I have two items to speak to. First, I'm asking that Brian Keriko, our Family and Youth Services Superintendent and special guest, will present a PowerPoint and introduce members of the Youth Advisory Board, who will share sections of the Youth Master Plan, but also their fiscal year 2022 goals. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm excited to be able to join you and come with you with our Youth Advisor Board members to talk about the FY21 year-end report. And so, I'll go ahead and get started, but they're going to do all the fun stuff in a bit. So, we're excited again, just because we have the opportunity, this young group in our Youth Advisory Board have the opportunity to serve over 17,000 students between the ages of 12 and 18 that serve, or that are living in our community, and the 21 members of our board get the opportunity to speak for them on multiple different levels. First and foremost, they get to do it here on the dais and also within our board as we meet on a regular basis to help meet those needs. Additionally, that covers Peoria Unified School District, but it also covers a lot of our charter school students, our public school, our private school students, and our homeschool population as well. And so, as we move forward, I know these young people have taken the opportunity and really held it close to their heart, the, the pride it takes to, to represent a whole city for this age group and be able to speak and have a voice for them. And so, at this time, I'd like to introduce the young adults to my right. First is Arizbeth Fiara. She is Youth Council Liaison. She is also, her second year on our board with us. And we have Dominic Van Winkle. He is a former Youth Council Liaison, hopefully a familiar face from last year. He also serves as our Vice Chair of our Youth Advisory Board. And then Savannah Rodriguez, Youth Council Liaison currently, and she's our Chair for this current year of our Youth Advisory Board. And so, I'll hand it over to them and give them the opportunity to talk about the, the amazing accomplishments that the board has achieved over this last year.
Thank you, Mr. Keriko. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am delighted to be here today to give a report of our accomplishments and our future goals. To begin with, the Youth Master Plan has six strategic goals identified and outlined, them being education and life preparation, safety, access, community collaboration, civic engagement, and out-of-school enrichment. Tonight, we will provide one highlight of each of these four goals achieved during the 2020 and 2021 school year. To start with, education and life preparation goal was achieved when members engaged the community in Bloom 365. Silent Witness Initiative, by collaborating with the youth to present their exhibit at Peoria's Two Parks. Addressing safety concerns for Peoria's youth is a priority for our board. The board members worked with local organizations such as D Squared Home for Homeless to support the needs of the youth in the West Valley. Utilizing social media shares resources for youth struggling with mental health concerns. The next goal is providing access to resources and services. We worked with the Youth Advisory Board alumni to offer youth college and career readiness workshops. Alumni represented five state universities, including ASU, U of A, GCU, GCC, and of course, NAU. At this time, I'll hand it over to Arizbeth to review the final three goals of the Youth Master Plan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our board achieved the community collaboration goal by collaborating with five local community-based organizations to identify needs, provide feedback, and volunteer. These organizations include Tomorrow We Vote, Bloom 365, Heart Pantry, Ben's Bells, and D Squared Homes for the Homeless. The fifth goal is civic engagement. The board coordinated with City of Peoria department staff to represent, to present, excuse me, the benefits for youth to live, learn, and, and work in Peoria. Department shared information during the annual Youth Government Day, which was held virtually this year, making it available to all of the youth. Out-of-school enrichment is our final goal. Members have provided countless hours of volunteering at community events, including at Vestancia's Drive-Thru Halloween event, and helping out at the city's grab-and-go events. I am proud to say that nine members of our board received the City of Peoria Youth Leadership Award for accruing over 100 hours of service to their peers, schools, and communities. Savannah Rodriguez and Dominique Van Winkle will now take you the rest of the way by sharing the board's 2021 through 2022 school year board goals.
Thank you very much, Arizbeth. Hello again, Mayor and Council. Dominique and I will share the five board goals for this upcoming, upcoming 2021 and 2022 school year. You can see them listed here on the right side of your screen, but we will speak to each of these separately. These goals were finalized, in fact, last week at our board's fall retreat, and our committees have already begun working how they are planning to accomplish these goals. Our first goal is increase the level of civic engagement in community events, awareness campaigns, and service learning projects to help others. Our second goal is to promote healthy neighborhoods by increasing the leadership development opportunities for peers. And our third goal is revisit and evaluate the Youth Master Plan. Thank you, and I'll pass it over to Mr. Van Winkle.
Thank you, Madam Rodriguez. Number four is to offer additional financial literacy and college and career readiness workshops for peers, just like our college readiness webinar we did. And an implementation is number five of an outreach program that empowers youth to share their perspective, voice, and ideas. That closes out the master plan, and at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we'd like to thank you for the ability to present tonight.
I, I am sure that I speak for all of us when I say how impressed we are, but Council, do you have any comments that you would like to make? Councilmember Binsbacher?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to. I, I was happy to sit down and actually see this report and, but the fact that you all delivered the presentation to highlight the year and talk about your goals and your vision and it just, you know, we're so proud. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your leadership and impacting the next generation. You all are the future of Peoria. It just seems so fitting, especially with, you know, some of the other recognition for tonight, just speaks volumes about what's happening in our city and how blessed we all are. Thank you, and congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to echo Councilman Binsbacher. You guys obviously setting the bar, raising the bar every year, every year you guys come in front of us, and we hear more and more of what you guys are doing out in the community. I do have one question. So, with the pandemic, how are you, what difficulty are you finding in communicating with the students at your respective schools?
If I may take this one, is that okay?
Yeah.
So, Mayor and Council, specifically Vice Mayor Edwards, so one of the Youth Advisory Board liaison goals for the past year was to, for former liaison to our, and I, to also get members to go out to the schools to be able to present about the board and things like that. However, a lot of them were not accepting visitors at the time, but what we were able to do is to get together and create a promotional video for our board, an advertising video that we can share on our social medias. We have both Instagram and Twitter, which kind of goes along with something we did a couple of years ago with Mental Health Initiative, when we put together PSA. And so, we were still able to get some level of productivity done, as well as our committees were able to plan for the future and continue working, sketching their outline. This new year, 2021 through 2022, our committees have a lot of new members. Some of them are the same as they were previously, but some people have been moved around. So, the skeleton of our plans from the past have been, has been laid out there, but also with the ability for new ideas to come in and to edit. So, we definitely have a lot of room to work with for this next year, what we're able to do, but we were still able to get an okay amount of work done to be satisfactory.
So, what I'm hearing is even though there were difficulties with the pandemic, you're not letting this pandemic stop you?
Absolutely not. I am proud to say I get to work with some of the most resilient people I know. I'm really grateful for this opportunity. We're not going to give up. I mean, we love the city. I know you guys love us and you support us, so we'll keep supporting you.
You guys keep up the great work. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. I just wanted to mention, going off of what you were saying, the difficulties, in all honesty, I think I could probably say for all of us is that last year during the pandemic, I think we've never been closer and we never worked harder than we ever have before, and I think that has made us even better this year and for this upcoming year. That's why I'm very excited. So, thank you.
And if I may, sorry, I'm too, sorry, no. To help answer your specific question, Councilmember Edwards, I was part of the Community Service Committee last year, and if you know, that's pretty much planning a lot of the events, and due to the pandemic, we weren't able to do that. One of our goals was to create a fundraiser, collaborate with the fundraising committee to fundraise for Heart Pantry and, I believe it was, yeah, Heart Pantry, to raise food using the schools, to make a kind of a competition between the schools and fundraise food and clothing articles for the organization that we were collaborating with. And we plan to continue all of our, like, plans from last year and just kind of move them on to this year, if that, like, answers your question. So, yeah, thank you.
It certainly does. It answers, you guys answer a lot of questions that we might have about how people can function when obstacles are put in their way. And you know, I think that in hindsight, I like to look at things in terms of hindsight, how will I look back on how I acted during this period of time? Will I be happy with the way, the decisions I made and the actions that I made? And I can certainly say that in hindsight, you all should be able to look back and say, I worked through a pandemic, I was a leader among youth in, during the pandemic, and I was able to succeed in spite of obstacles, numerous obstacles, that caused other people to sit back and say, I can't do it this time, I have to wait until a year goes by or two years go by, I'll just. I'll just rest and wait this one out. You certainly didn't do that. And so I hope that when you look back in hindsight, you are very, very happy with your accomplishments. We certainly are. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you all. Very inspiring, obviously, here or anywhere else at work. Last item that I had had was to introduce Jennifer Stein, our Director of Communications. She'll present a brief discussion on the redistricting open houses and really a brief update on the broader redistricting process. So I'll pass it to Ms. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. All right, so as you know, redistricting is underway. So tonight is more of a public service announcement, just to promote the upcoming community open houses. So to remind the public and everyone, our first round begins October 11th through the 14th. We will have open houses located throughout the city, and we also are offering a virtual open house. And we encourage the residents to attend and participate in the map building exercise. The map building tool will actually open up on October 6th, and we'll have plenty of instructions online, so everyone should hopefully feel comfortable with, comfortable with it. But we also have paper maps available as well. So there's several options to participate in. And then after the first round, where we will inform, provide instructions, answer any questions, then everybody has the opportunity to build their maps throughout October, and then we will come back again and what our consultant will be working with us to basically define if the criteria was met and determine how many finalists will come back out to the public to get feedback and see what comments are on the maps that we showcase November 15th through the 18th. So that is the second round. We're following the same pattern, so everyone can see Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, same location. And then we have another virtual as well that we could receive feedback in real time. And then through our social media and our web, we will continuously be accepting comments as well. And then that kind of concludes, it's really a reminder of the open houses and of course, peoriaz.gov. Redistricting is where all of our information is housed. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Are there any questions for Jen Stein or anything about redistricting? I just want to remind everybody, the City of Peoria has six council districts, and they must be equalized in population after we get a decade census. And so we got those numbers from the decade census, and now we have to make all of our voting districts equal population throughout the city. And that's part of our city charter. There's a lot of legalities that go with how and when we do that, but these public, these public meetings are very important to the residents who are listening out there. These are your voting districts. So you want to vote for someone who resides in your community. That's why we have districts in the City of Peoria, so I encourage you to make sure that your, that your vote counts, and this is step one in doing that. So thank you for all the things that you're putting forward, all the ways that you're getting the word out there. And this map building tool is going to be a way for everybody to create their own map at home and submit it, and we look forward to getting those submissions from all of our residents. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And there being no further, no further business, we are adjourned.